I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, July 7, 2014. Want to welcome everyone. I hope somewhere out there is Mike Parker, who is the pastor of the Hurt Road Baptist Church at 17 Hurt Road, who will come forward at this time and give our invocation and also lead us in the pledge to the flag. Would everyone please rise?
Let's pray. Father, I thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together as a people of a city and a community to just compare notes and to compare ideas. And, Lord, I just pray that you would give wisdom and guidance to the agenda that we have today. Thank you that you've given us an opportunity to be free in this country as we just celebrated the independence of this country. Thank you for the democracy and the governance that we have in this country. Lord, I thank you that you've given us another chance to be free in Christ, and it's in His name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. And for those folks that don't know where Hurt Road Baptist Church is, it's on Hurt Road. And I'd say probably about a mile down on the left-hand side, right off Concord Road. Great little church. Thank you so much. Agenda changes, the only agenda changes that we have is that item 4A will be tabled, and it's so noted, until the 21st. And I think that's the only agenda item that needs to be noted. Under the mayor's report, I do, I think we've got one candidate out there, Susan Thayer, school board, if you'd like to say something. Can't wait to hear what you've got to say.
Well, thank you so much. You've always been patient to listen to me. First of all, I want to thank the voters. On May 20, I was placed in the frontrunner position, and I'm very appreciative of that. Everyone here has been very generous and gracious to me. That's wonderful. I've also been endorsed by the two educator groups in the county and by the other opponent who was in the race, Jeff Abel. So I need all of your support and help on July 22, and I hope you will encourage everyone you know to go out and vote. Thank you.
So that's two weeks from tomorrow, right?
That's right. That's right. It's here.
I will say this, that is probably one of the most important positions that the elected folks have to vote, and probably one of the most critical positions. So I'd encourage everyone to get out and vote. It's a very important seat. I don't know that I have anything else. I know that Corky, that's your name, Corky Welch. Corky, I think, is going to mention, as we get in, as toward the end of the meeting when he gives his report about the successful three-day, I guess, event we had at the Bronner-Taylor House or Bronner Hall, and it was well-attended. It was really unbelievable. Had some great speakers, and I just want to thank those folks that turned out very well. And I'm sure Corky's going to bring that up. Item 4 is land issues, zonings, and annexations. As I mentioned, A 2014-164, public hearings, zoning requests. That item will be tabled, and I'll turn it right over to Chair Nolowich to let her make that motion.
Yes, at this time, I would like to move to table item 4A, item 2014-164. This is zoning request Z14-015. It's a modification of a currently approved site plan and building elevations for a 3.13-acre tract. It's land lot 519 and 562. This is on Hawthorne Avenue, Davis Drive, and St. Charles Avenue. The applicant is Trayton Homes, and they request to table to our mayor and council meeting on July 21, 2014. So that will be two weeks from tonight.
Motion second to table to July 21. All those who favor the motion, please vote. Approved seven zero. Was there anybody here for that particular item? Okay, to show that there was no one. Item B, 2014-183, approval of annexation request ordinance 2014-10, 100% owners requesting annexation land lots 459, 478 of the 17th District, lying in four parcels, being known as 4300 King Springs Road, 18.7 acres; 4240 King Springs Road, 2.8 tract, vacant tract of land, King Springs Road, 1.1 acre; and 4217 King Valley Drive, 2.4 acres in Smyrna, for a total of 19.8 acres, second section of Cobb County. This is, I believe, is St. Thomas Catholic Church. I'll ask Mr. Taylor to give us the background on that, and we'll go from there.
Mr. Mayor, as you mentioned, St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church, has come to us and asked to be annexed into the city. As you mentioned a minute ago, this is a total of approximately 19.8 total acres, with four parcels located at 4300 King Springs Road, one parcel located at 4217 King Valley Drive, and a vacant tract on King Springs Road that has no address. This is a 100% application. If approved tonight, it would become effective August 1, 2014. We have received a non-injection letter from Cobb County, and we are cleared to move forward on this, and staff does recommend approval.
100% request does not really require a public hearing, does it, Scott? And Mr. Fennel's ward, and I know we have someone here from the church, if there's any questions, so Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to invite Representative of the Archbishop to step forward and talk about the property. We're proud that the Archbishop and the Archdiocese of all of Atlanta is based in Smyrna, and now their parish is coming into the city as well. Please introduce yourself for the folks at home.
Thank you. My name is Gus Scannapieco. I'm the parish administrator and chief operating officer of St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church. We are approaching our 50th anniversary next year, and we have 7,156 families as of last night, approximately 30,000 parishioners at the church, so many of whom, a large percentage, that live in Smyrna. I myself have lived in Smyrna since 1991. I have had the experience of the services of the City of Smyrna, whether it be police, fire, or administrative. And having lived in five states, I have to say that this is probably the best state and city I've ever lived in, and I can speak from experiences that the church too has experienced some great help from the City of Smyrna, and we wish to become a part of Smyrna. We feel we've been a part of Smyrna. We have had situations of emergency, and by the time the emergency was over, finally someone came. I think with the growth of the church, we need something better, and therefore, for us, we are looking forward to the approval tonight of the acceptance of St. Thomas, the Apostle Catholic Church, to be a part of the City of Smyrna, and we would accept that with great pride. Thank you.
And we're delighted. I asked before the meeting, okay, why do they want to come in? But you just said it, and I didn't, we're excited about having the church in the city.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much.
We appreciate it.
You've got an accent. Are you from Boston?
[laughing]
Because I was just up there about two weeks ago.
I've tried so hard to get rid of that, but unfortunately, having lived in Texas 15 years and here for nearly 22 years, I still carry the accent of the state of Rhode Island.
Yeah.
And...
It's okay.
Excellent.
But it ain't never going to, if it's been 22 years and you've lived in Texas, you can forget it. You're going to always sound like it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
I have one question.
Yes.
Is there, are there any plans, or does the Archdiocese and Office of Education have any plans for a school? Y'all have, there's a lot of land, and right now Cobb County families, or Smyrna families, have to drive aways to find Catholic education for their children. There are no high schools in Cobb County.
A little history, if I may.
Yes.
Eight years ago, my wife passed away, and after dealing with that for a couple of years, I decided to move away from all of my businesses that I owned and to give back for all I had received in my life. And so I became the parish administrator at St. Thomas. Within the first year, the first thing I did was to start a preschool. This year, come the new school year, we will also have five-year-olds at the school, and I have petitioned the Archdiocese to be able to, within every year or two, to start another grade. So we would very much like to have a school. Our new pastor, who has been with us now for about a year and a half, comes out of Orlando, Florida, where he had a school. So we have the experience, and we've had great, great accomplishments with the preschool in that every child who's left and applied for public school have all been accepted over the last five years. So our intent is to try to bring a school to the City of Smyrna because we too feel that the value of education is so critical and that we'd like to contribute to helping those families achieve that with our school.
If he needs help with the Archdiocese, he and I are pretty tight.
I'm sorry?
The Archdiocese, he and I are pretty tight. We're good friends. Whoever it is, Archbishop.
Well, the Archbishop decided it'd be better to move to the City of Smyrna, too.
I was there the day.
We could hook him back.
Affordable housing. But thank you so much, Ron.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gus, and we're excited. I'm excited that it's in my ward, the structure and the property that ultimately will be a mission unto itself for the community. But parishioners that are a part of the family, being a part of Smyrna, expressing that, and then involving themselves in the community in the ways they always do in the Catholic Church is a great thing for us to say thank you for coming to us and asking to be a part of us.
And I might add that, starting in the fall, we will be renovating the entire property, and hopefully, the look of the parish will change for the better as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good. Mr. Mayor, I've been given a couple of suggested language changes that I think passed legal muster. I want to make sure they get in the record appropriately, so I'm going to actually hand this directly to the clerk to make sure to get it in. But I'm going to read off my motion to approve the annexation request, ordinance number 2014-10, 100% owners requesting an annexation, land lots 459 and 478 of the 17th District, lying in parcels, four parcels, being known as 4300 King Springs Road, 4240 King Springs Road, vacant tract of land, King Springs Road, and 4217 King Valley Drive, 2.4 acres in Smyrna, Georgia, for a total of 19.8 acres, second section of Cobb County, Georgia. And I move approval.
Motion is second to approve this request. Is there any discussion? All those who favor the motion, please vote. You're in, seven zero. Thank you very much. We look forward to you. Thank you.
Very much.
Thank you. Item 5 is previous licenses. We have nothing under that. Issue 6 is formal business. A is 2014-187, approval of the name change for the Village at Lake Park Apartments Complex, land lots 704, 705, 734, 735, 736, and 737, at 2085 Lake Park Drive, Cortland Partners. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
The Village at Lake Park Apartment Complex is under new ownership, Cortland Partners. They're the new owners, and they are requesting to change the name of the complex from the Village at Lake Park to simply The Village. The Fire Marshal, City Engineer, Housing Inspector, and Chief Building Official have reviewed the requests and recommend approval of the name change.
This is Ms. Bluestein's district. Ms. Bluestein.
Yes. Mr. Taylor.
They're calling it The Village.
Oh, okay.
The Village. In discussion, all those who favor the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item B, under formal business, is Resolution 2014-09, approval, approve the renewal of SunTrust Corporate, Resolution R 2014-09, and Certificate of Incumbency. Mr. Taylor, the background.
This particular item is one that we do this time every year. The city updates this information with SunTrust annually to identified officials with the city who are responsible for use of the SunTrust credit card. It is required to be, go through a resolution process, and this is something we do every year, and we recommend approval.
Ms. Chair Nolowich, you chair the Finance and Administration Committee. Ms. Nolowich.
Thank you, yes, this is something that we do annually, and at this time, I would like to move to approve item 6B, Resolution 2014-09, to approve the renewal of the SunTrust Corporate Resolution R 2014-09 and Certificate of Incumbency.
Motion and a second. I believe Ms. Pritchett got that in before you did, Mr. West. All those who favor the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. C is Resolution 2014-10, approval of Resolution R 2014-10, extending the emergency 9/11 surcharge. Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, this is another one of these items that we do this time every year, dating back to May of 2001, when the city council approved the resolution authorizing the city to collect a $1.50 monthly fee from telephone subscribers to offset the costs of 911 telephone charges. In order to continue collecting this $1.50, this resolution must be extended annually to continue the surcharge. Staff does recommend approval.
Mr. Ron Fennel, who chairs the Public Safety Committee.
Mr. Mayor, the 911 fund is always short of dollars because we haven't had a resolution at the state level to capture all of those folks who have 911 service through cell phones, but we hope the legislature can resolve that soon. To that end, this is an annual authorization, and I move approval of Resolution 2014-10, extending the emergency 911 surcharge.
Motion is second by Councilmember Welch. Any discussion, all those who favor the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none tonight. Item 8 is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
We have two items on the consent agenda this evening. Item A is an approval of the June 16, 2014, mayor and council meeting amendments. Item B is an approval to use the council chambers on July 10, 2014, from 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. for a special purpose local option sales tax, SPOLOST 2014, public information meeting.
Your motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion is second by Mr. Fennel. All those who favor the motion, please vote. It's approved seven zero. Committee reports will start tonight with Ms. Melanie Pritchett.
Thank you very much. I hope everyone had a safe and happy Fourth of July. The weather kind of spoiled me. Nice, and now it's scalding hot again. I really don't have any special report tonight, but I do want to comment that I am not a Civil War buff, but when I went to that presentation last Tuesday night at Bronner Hall, I have to say, it was very interesting and very enlightening, and I know that Mr. Welch will give you more information, but I think it's a great thing the city did for that. And if you have an opportunity to see the artifacts, they are here in Smyrna, so I'm sure Mr. Welch would do that. With that, I yield, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Well, July 4 was the most delightful day I've experienced in Georgia in years. I would, I don't want to wish anybody any damage, but I'd love to have a hurricane come through every year so that we could have such pleasant weather. Mr. Sudrith does not have a report tonight, and so I yield.
Ms. Chair Nolowich.
Thank you. Yes, there is an event coming up. This Saturday night is the second Smyrna concert of the summer, and I'm just looking up the name of the band. It's a summer concert series. It starts at 7:00 p.m., and the band is Chris Stalkup and the Grange, and we hope that everyone can make it out there at 7:00 p.m. There are a lot of other great events happening around the city. The fresh produce market continues. There are lots of great things that are happening at the library. Summer's a busy time in Smyrna, and we hope that you will come out and join us at events in Ward 3 and throughout the city. I also want to take a moment to recognize my grandmother, and I'm recognizing her because she loved nothing more than being recognized. She passed away two weeks ago. We actually had her funeral down in New Orleans this past Saturday, a week ago, and I just wanted to comment for a moment on her life because it was so remarkable. She was, actually, we talked a lot about education tonight, and she was from one of the founding families of education in the New Orleans area. Her father established the first grammar school in Jefferson Parish, which is now one of the most densely populated areas in the country. And she was a schoolteacher for 47 years. She was a grammar school teacher and was beloved by multiple generations of students who knew her as Mrs. Lacy. She was also remarkable in that when she was 87 years old, she reinvented herself several times. She outlived two husbands, and she outlived her home, which she lost in Hurricane Katrina nine years ago. She moved to Roswell after Katrina and completely reestablished herself there. She began teaching again. She taught English as a second language to students at St. Brendan's. She had a great life here in Atlanta, and I just wanted to comment for a moment on her life because, again, she loved nothing more than being recognized. She was all over the social pages of the New Orleans paper, and the first thing she did when she moved to assisted living here in Atlanta was to make sure that she was elected as the president of the social committees for the Chambrayl Senior Living Community. She loved to gavel, and I might have inherited a little bit of that, but she also loved to serve, and we will miss her very much. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corky Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've spoken this evening, we talked a little bit about Civil War event last week, and I really want to thank everybody that had anything to do with it, but especially the people I'm going to name tonight. Jennifer Bennett kind of held this ad hoc committee together of a bunch of men, and myself and Mike Terry, Bill Marcioni went on the committee, Mayor Bacon, and worked with Brockington to bring them in and put the exhibit together, take it apart when it was all done. And then we had speakers on Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. Tuesday, I want to thank Mike Schaefer and Brian Wills, both from Kennesaw State University. On Wednesday, our own Bill Marcioni. And Thursday was a gentleman named Keith Bohannon that came from West Georgia but grew up in the Smyrna area. So I really want to thank everybody that had anything to do with that, and it was a great event. On Tuesday evening, we, of course, we coincided with Food Truck Tuesday and had cannon shooting on a couple of occasions, had some storytellers, and I think everybody enjoyed it that evening, and in good crowds all three nights. Wednesday was the least of them, but Tuesday night, I guess we had 75 people. Wednesday night, another 55 or 60 people, and just turned out to be a great event, celebrating something that the City of Smyrna should be proud of. Also, I need to remind everybody of a meeting that's coming up here in the community center on July 9 from 7:00 to 8:30 regarding the Dobbin's Air Reserve Base Land Use Plan. If it's something that you're interested in, please attend. Like I said, it's at the community center from 7:00 to 8:30 this coming Wednesday evening. With that, Mr. Mayor.
That's all. Ms. Susan Wilson.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to let everyone know about an event that's happening this Sunday at the Smyrna Library. It's sponsored by the Friends of the Smyrna Library, and they are sponsoring a special film screening Sunday, July 13, at 3:00 p.m. in the Smyrna Library Meeting Room. And the film is Kennesaw One Last Mountain, about the Battle of Kennesaw Mountain and the Atlanta Campaign. And the film uses authentic battle recreations and compelling accounts of soldiers, civilians, and freed slaves to bring to life one of the most dramatic episodes of the Civil War. So hope you can join, and thank you. With that, I yield.
Mr. Wade Lenika.
Thank you, Your Honor. My condolences to Ms. Nolowich on the loss of her grandmother. I also want to extend condolences to Cindy and Steve Crocker, residents of this area forever, on the loss of Cindy's mom two weeks ago. We're sorry to hear Betty Peoples passing and extend our condolences to the family. Finally, I want to follow up on what Mr. Welch said about the meeting Wednesday night here at the community center about Dobbin's. It's critically important to the economy of Smyrna and Cobb County and really Metro Atlanta that Dobbin's Air Reserve Base and Lockheed Martin continue operations on that site. Every chance that the federal government gets to close facilities and bases were at risk, and one of the things that communities who want to retain those kinds of things need to do is come out and show support. And so I'd encourage you to attend the meeting if you've got questions or want to get information, but if you support the economic engine, that is Lockheed Martin and Dobbin's Air Reserve Base, the Clay National Guard Center, and support having them in our community and the impact of those payrolls and purchasing decisions that they make in businesses and homes all across the county, you know, it's important to be there to show support. So I encourage everyone to attend. Wednesday, 7:00 p.m. at the Smyrna Community Center. Thank you, Mr. Welch, for bringing that up. With that, I yield.
Mr. Ron Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to also echo the celebration that occurred this past week for Smyrna's role in American history and how things turned here in Smyrna. Some of our locals, we were a small village of a few families with a couple of churches holding us together at that time. When these troops came marching through, and the local troops who were here built revetments, named after the general, General Shoup, the Chuppades. You can still see them in Smyrna on Oakdale Road. There's still a fort within the county's purview that we really don't have public access to, but maybe one day if the park builds out. But there's a remarkable history. We turned Sherman in Smyrna. He entered Atlanta, not in Smyrna, but further to the east as a result of the hardiness of the defenses that were here. I think that the artifacts that the mayor and through his friendships, longstanding relationships, have brought for us to be allowed to display is a remarkable collection, and I think people who got a chance to see it celebrate that. The speakers that Mr. Welch and Ms. Bennett were able to put together showed exactly where in the Atlanta Campaign, Smyrna played a key crucial role, and I think you have to celebrate and acknowledge your history along the way in order to know where we're going in the future. And so I'm proud to see the family gathering that was on the grounds there at the Bronner Campus. It was really fun to be there. My kids loved being out there. Music out in the park, food truck on one side, educational programming inside, weather was perfect, and even watching Mr. Welch yank the lanyard and fire that cannon, it was a lot of fun. So if you missed it, I'm sorry you missed it, but it was a good day to be in Smyrna that day. Additionally, I want to acknowledge the SPOLOST meeting that we passed. We're going to have several SPOLOST meetings throughout the county. You've read it in the paper. You've been hearing about it. This is an important program of work that's being articulated. You know, the difference between taxes and special purpose local option sales tax, something that we in Cobb County do probably differently than almost everybody else, is when we have projects that we need to pay for, we pay as we go instead of bond it and put a lot of debt out there. But this is an articulation of what the next six years might look like should voters approve it. But if you have a for or against attitude either way, come and hear what's being proposed, come discuss it, debate it, become educated about it so that you can make an informed decision at those meetings. That reminds me that July 22, again, is Election Day. We want to make sure, I'll give one more reminder before, but early voting is available. You can get out and early vote now for those citizens who may not be able to make it on that workday of July 22. I'd recommend you find some time between now and then to get in the early voting. And then finally, the State of the City Address that the mayor provides every year to a joint meeting of the Smyrna Business Association and the Smyrna Area Council of the Cobb Chamber of Commerce will be this Thursday at 10 o'clock. If you haven't bought a ticket, you might be too late. You can go to smyrnabusiness.org or the Cobb County Chambers website, but the Fire Marshal will probably be there to make sure that we don't let any more people in. That's always a sellout to hear the mayor give his State of the City Address, and we appreciate that every year. Finally, as I like to do, and I hope you do, when you... Finally, as I like to do, and I hope you do, when you see a member of our Public Safety Community, whether it's our Rangers or 911 operators or the police and fire that are the most publicly visible, please take a moment and say thank you to them because they stand 24/7 in the breach on our behalf, and I want to say publicly again how much I appreciate them. With that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Just one correction. I hope that's at 12:00.
That's at 12:00.
At 10:00, but yeah, I'll be.
You'll be there at 10:00.
I'll be there at 5 minutes later. Mr. Eric Taylor, anything? Scott Cock, our deputy city clerk, will he say anything? Okay. I was supposed to mention something. I forgot about it. This Saturday, July the 12th, at the Atlanta Marriott Northwest, which is right off Windy Hill Road, is the first time in Atlanta, the AC Gilbert Vintage Toy Show. It's free for the public. Kids and parents will have a lot of fun. Actually, I got this from former legislator Randy Soder, but some of, he says in his comments to me, "Some of the most interesting and amazing toys you've ever seen, and hundreds of vintage toys from the early 20s will be on display." That's this Saturday, 9:00 to 2:00. Atlanta Marriott Northwest is free. I might even go by there. So, all right. Nothing else. We've got, we do not have a show call hearing. We've got two people signed up for citizens input. Alec Bakary, 3459 Shawnee Trail, comments.
My first comment tonight is fine tuning. I've always believed the majority rule, but unfortunately, with voting, the minority rules. And in the May 20 election, 17.6% of the registered voters in Cobb County voted on that state election. I find that pathetic. I don't know why the people do not understand that we have more to win or lose locally than nationally with our taxes, infrastructure, our trees. But 17.6% is pathetic, which goes in hand with what we've had in Smyrna in the last three elections of 20% or less. A friend of mine in Cherokee complained that only 30% voted there in this May 20. Again, I'd love to see 30 here in Cobb County. At least we're going in the right direction, but it's frustrating trying to understand why people cannot get out, and probably the ones that complain are the ones that don't vote. So I hope people wake up and have a second chance on July 22. My last comment is, we need, since you've done a policy now on clear, on smoking, you've got to have a policy in place on these fireworks. Over in my ward, it's the same people shooting off illegal fireworks, 10, 11, 12 at night. Call the police, they give them a warning. That's not enforcing a state law. There should be a policy in place. I'd love to see a $500 fine, first time. Everyone that does this, shooting the illegal fireworks, knows they're doing it illegally. That would save the policemen half their first shift going out and answering calls to clean up these fireworks complaints and tell them to stop. Warning them continually every Fourth of July, every New Year's doesn't do it. You've got to have some teeth in the state law, and I hope this council addresses this issue, and once word gets around, there's going to be less complaints, which lets the officers go do other calls. But I think it's very fair that Smyrna stands up to the state law and has a policy in place of automatic tickets because it's frustrating to see the same people doing the same violations year after year and only getting warnings. They know they're only getting warnings, said I don't care. So they do it until they get the warning. That's not solving the problem, and I hope this council addresses this problem on the illegal fireworks. Thank you.
Al Graves, 1079 Pinehurst Drive, Concord Road, was this topic. Lisa.
Thank you. Mayor and council, I'm here tonight to share a very important event for me that I never thought I would experience in my lifetime in Smyrna. I had the unbelievable experience of driving from Atlanta Road to my street that I've been advocating for a traffic light for the 60 years I've been in Ward 4, and guess what? I stopped at a traffic light. I had numerous citizens in Smyrna call me to alert me of this thing, and I'm under no illusions that this is because I've been advocating for this for the better part of the 60 years. We looked up and got a SLOST through, and Jim Crowe assured me of it that all intersections on Concord Road would have adequate turn lanes and turn signals. Well, after I got over the thrill of actually witnessing this, I looked to my left, and unfortunately, there is no provisions for a turn lane off of Concord. I looked on the other side going west towards South Cobb Drive, and there's a provision for about, I would say, five or six or seven cars. All they were was some cones on the left side there, and I'm not absolutely sure that this, in the state of disrepair on Concord Road, that this is the final configuration of what that intersection will be, but I have been assured by everyone that had anything to do with the design of that since the original meeting in 2008, when Jim Crowe outlined the configuration that this would happen. So I don't know if it's an oversight, if I'm a little premature with my complaining about the lack of a turn lane there, but I wish someone who is in a position of authority will go out and look at that because it, the cone area that's shown there might, on a good day, accommodate one car and half of another. And when I stopped at the traffic light, I looked in my rearview mirror, and behind me was two lanes of traffic all the way back to King Springs Road. So you're not alleviating that 5:00 traffic if you don't have provisions in a turn lane to move the cars out of the way so they can move on through. So let me say this, regardless of how this occurred, I am proud, but after 60 years of paying taxes and advocating for it, I think it's a little bit overdue.
One more time, this Saturday, July the 12th, the Atlanta Marriott Hotel, AC Gilbert Vintage Toy Show, Free the Public, first time in Atlanta ever. One more thing that I did want to, Corky Feld, to mention and not to say you, that we did unveil a copy of the original city charter. It was on display, and if you get a chance, I think it's going to be on permanent display, maybe at the library. So if you get a chance to go, that's an amazing piece of artifacts that, my relationship with a young lady that I will not mention who she was, but she wanted, she gave it to me, and we made copies of it, but it's actually, if you read it, it's amazing. It even, it was in 1872, and it was, tells how the city of Smyrna was going to be laid out, who the aldermen were named, and they'd have an election every July, and a lot of history. To Bill Marcioni, he did a great job Wednesday. He's one of my favorites. He speaks to where I can understand what he's saying, but all the speakers did a great job. And we had, every night, it was just about, well, they had to bring in chairs, I know, Tuesday and Wednesday. So a great event. If there's no other visits to be brought for this body, I'd tell this many a journal that it's about 8:12.